You just come up. No, you can't. You gotta get signed in at the front office. Mark Foos, our secretary.
They want him to actually get work done.
Yeah.
It'd be like job shadow.
Job shadow.
You know? So that'd be a no.
Yeah, that'd be a no. Thanks for at least considering it. How about take a video of it? You can watch the video. You've got little carts that run around that place. You could probably ride around one of them and try to dance.
I'd like to welcome everybody to our Monday, January 13th, 2025 Cascade City Council meeting. We'll have a call to order with a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call.
Oliphant. Here. Weber.
Here.
Hush.
Here.
Gail.
Here.
Delaney.
Here.
Need a motion to approve the agenda?
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
Motion by Gail.
I'll second.
Second by Weber. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
At this point, we'll have public comment. There's limited three minutes per person on agenda items and local government issues. Seeing none, we'll go to the consent agenda. City council minutes, 12:09:24. Cascade Library Board minutes, 12:10:24. Cascade Park Board minutes, 1:06:24. FEH Design Field Report, Cascade Public Library, 12:03:24. Cascade Economic Development Corporation minutes, 11:20:24. JCD Bulletin, First Quarter 2025. Cascade Municipal Utilities Board minutes, 11:13:24 and 12:11:24. January 9th, 2025 Claims, November Month End Financial Reports, December Month End Financial Reports. Is there any questions on the consent agenda? Seeing none, I need a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Motion by Hush.
I'll second.
Second by Delaney. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Number seven, City of Cascade Proclamation for Human Trafficking Prevention and Awareness Month. Ally.
Good evening. My name is Ally Rechess, and I'm 21 years old and currently a senior at the University of Dubuque. I have been spreading awareness and education to surrounding communities for quite some time. Mount Carmel Bluffs, Monticello High School, Roosevelt Middle School, and Police and Fire Departments located in Monticello are a few locations in which I have delivered formal presentations and/or instructed training programs. As a long-term resident of Jones County, I am honored to bring this awareness to my own community once more. Human trafficking is an immensely growing and recurring issue in today's society. It is a multi-billion dollar criminal industry that affects nearly 25 million people worldwide. Human trafficking is the use of force, fraud, or coercion to compel a person into commercial, sexual acts, or labor against his or her will. This crime is not discriminatory and can happen to anyone. Traffickers and victims can be of any race, socioeconomic status, ethnicity, gender, or age. Human trafficking also takes on many different shapes as there are domestic servitude, sex and labor trafficking, debt bondage, and many more forms. Because of the complexity of this crime, it can be difficult to spot, charge, and prosecute. Spotting human trafficking will not be easy, but being aware of it can make a significant difference. Unfortunately, traffickers are usually charged with sexual assault or domestic violence charges. It is easier to prosecute with these charges rather than the former due to the level of difficulty it takes to prove. Sadly, this lower level of difficulty comes with a significantly lower consequence. We need to stand up to this gut-wrenching crime. The Tri-State Coalition Against Human Trafficking and Slavery would like to invite the residents of Cascade to a 100% free and educational fun event. A showing of the movie Maya will take place on January 22nd at 5:30 PM at the Phoenix Theater in Dubuque, Iowa. Prior to the showing, the film director will be joining us via an online meeting to give her perspective and reason behind this beautiful creation. We also host lunch and learn sessions, community events, and the option to join our team of devoted souls. These are only a few examples of how easy shining a light on human trafficking can be. The awareness you would bring to the city of Cascade by approving this proclamation is only the start of combating this heinous crime. On behalf of the Tri-State Coalition Against Human Trafficking and Slavery, I would like to thank you for this opportunity. This group has found that the best way to make a change is one step at a time, one individual at a time, and a lifetime supply of dedication. Every individual has a hope. It is only their right to be able to live out the positives in life instead of being stuck in the human trafficking. Thank you. The proclamation we would like you guys to consider for approval reads, whereas by presidential proclamation each January has been designated National Human Trafficking and Modern Day Slavery Prevention Month. In addition, January 11th has been designated National Human Trafficking Awareness Day, and whereas the issue of sex and labor trafficking are a violation of human rights. The hope of this proclamation is to raise awareness of this topic. And whereas the city of Cascade wishes to acknowledge the following organization for its 10th anniversary to raise awareness about human trafficking, the Tri-State Coalition Against Human Trafficking and Modern Day Slavery and the United Nations Global Plan of Action. And whereas this organization has three pillars upon which it stands, protect, prevent, and prosecute. We invite all residents of Cascade to educate themselves on this issue and support these three pillars to help eradicate the problem. And whereas human trafficking is a national, state, and local issue, we encourage involvement in the coalition's lunch and learn program to develop advocacy protocols for survivors. And whereas we also invite parents, middle school, and high school students, teachers, and all citizens to the free viewing of Maya on Wednesday, January 22nd, 2025, at 5:30 in the Dubuque Phoenix Theater. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody have any questions? None? Thank you.
Thank you.
We appreciate you.
Number eight, Human Trafficking and Modern Day Slavery Prevention Month in the city of Cascade, Iowa. Do we need a...
I've just kind of read most of it.
Yep, gotcha.
It's the same.
Number nine, Bergen KDV to present fiscal year 24 audit report.
Chains Interrupted was unable to read their statement of the proclamation. Is that what came this evening?
Oh, you could still, if you'd like to.
Yes, that'd be wonderful. Thank you.
Thank you.
If she could, she could.
She's...
Yeah. You want to do it now? Yeah, that'd be great.
Thank you. Sorry for the confusion.
No, it's fine.
I am here as a representative to Chains Interrupted from Cedar Rapids, and they wish to present to you this statement. It's difficult to imagine human trafficking exists in Iowa communities, but it does. Take the case of Lila, name changed for privacy. A 16-year-old girl who got away from the trafficker that brought her to Iowa from another state. She was found hiding in a business in Cedar Rapids. Lila didn't know who to trust and was too scared to be forthcoming about her situation. Fortunately, this business had received training by Chains Interrupted and recognized the signs of trafficking. From the training, they also knew how to talk with the teen in a way that didn't scare her off or traumatize her further. They called Chains Interrupted to talk to them through the next steps. And we are happy to report the girl is safe and back with her family in the state she came from. It only takes one person who has the right training to make a difference. If you, your friends, family, workplace, church, school, or community group are interested in any of the 18 specialized training programs, please contact info@chainsinterrupted.com. Thank you, Mayor Steve Napper, city council members, law enforcement educators, and community leaders for your commitment to raising awareness and taking action to combat human trafficking in our community. Thanks.
Thank you.
Deanna, as a recognition for both groups, can we at least have something on Facebook and our website?
Absolutely.
At least the January 22nd viewing in Dubuque and recognition of...
That'd probably be a good one for the calendar.
Bergen KDV to present fiscal year 24 audit report.
Part two.
Part two. Okay, I'm Dustin Olpats. I'm a senior manager with Bergen KDV. I've presented to you a couple of years, I believe. Last year, I think it was snow again, so you let me present virtually, but very happy to be in front of you all again. I'm going to go through my PowerPoint. If you have any questions during my presentation, feel free to interrupt me. I have such a passion for city finance that if nobody's at me, I'll just kind of keep going through the whole thing. So we start with the independent auditors' report. So this is essentially what you pay us for, to come in, test, examine, issue an opinion on your financial statements. So we do give an unmodified opinion, which is the best we're allowed to give as your auditors. It says that everything in your financial statements are fairly presented in all material respects. We also issue a government auditing standard report. So this is where we look a little bit closer at compliance with laws, contracts, and grant agreements. And so we did have three material weakness findings this year. So the material weakness is the highest level finding. The first one being the lack of segregation of accounting duties, which you hear from me every year, related to the small number of office staff. Not enough hands are in every transaction to properly segregate all of those accounting duties. The second one, I believe you've heard about quite a bit already, so I won't dwell on it too much. Related to utility billing, there was an error where there was a material amount of water that ended up not being billed. And then the third one, we did have one material audit adjustment. So essentially, a revenue came in and was coded to the wrong account, and we had to move it for your financial statements to be materially correct. And so anytime we correct an error that is over a threshold for materiality, we have to report it. So nothing crazy, but again, something that we're required to report. The second bullet point is the Iowa Code of Compliance. So the Office of the State Auditor gives us a series of checklists of state statutes that we're required to check compliance with. Two findings related to that test work. So you have a couple of funds that are in deficits. I think they're each about $35,000 to $40,000. And then the second bullet point there is one function was over budget. So in Iowa, if you look at your functions, so general government, public safety, public works, each of those are required to be under budget as well as in total. And so anytime any individual function is over its budget, we have to report it. And so that's what that is. One more. Next few slides, we're going to look at the general fund. So the main thing I wanted to point out here was your cash balance. So increase of about $800,000 overall. $800,000 in on the sign fund balance. So at the end of the year, you were at about 40% of expenditures, which is higher than it's been the last few years. As you can see, that orange-ish bar is your cash balance. And so that amount is at the highest in five years presented. Next slide. Thank you. General fund receipts. So this one is a little exaggerated this year, especially the blue piece of it, because you received some grant funding, some one-time grant funding this year. And so you're going to see that on the next slide as well, that your expenditures were also elevated because you have to spend the grant funds before you receive them. And so it kind of results in inflation in both. So yeah, dispersment's at the highest in five years presented because of expending those grant funds, which is like the light blue, kind of the middle one. That section is significantly higher than it's been in the other four years. Next, we look at operating income of your enterprise funds. So these are your water and sewer funds. So operating income is purely what it takes to run the department. The charges for services it brings in, less the operating costs. So it doesn't include any capital costs. It doesn't include debt service, and it doesn't include transfers in and out to other funds. And so the green bar being the water. So you can see that the green bar has gotten down the last five years. And this year, there was actually an operating loss of about $19,000. So one thing that we recommend, you know, look at rates and ensure that the department can operate sustainably. And then sewer, very healthy as far as operating income. Is the lowest in five years presented, though, even though it's still very positive. So you kind of have to take that slide with this slide because, like I said, the previous slide doesn't include capital costs. It doesn't include debt costs, and it doesn't include transfers to other funds. So this is kind of the other side of that, is overall cash position obviously includes everything. And so the water fund, again, being the lowest point in the five years presented, only about $57,000 sitting in reserves. And then the sewer, again, the lowest in the five years presented, a little more cash in reserves of about $460,000. These cash balances are obviously your reserves. Like when you have capital cost come up, it kind of tells you what you have in the bank to spend before you would have to start to borrow for some of those larger infrastructure needs. So just wanted to bring those to your attention. One more. And that's me. If you ever need to get ahold of me, if you ever have any questions, city finance is wild and it's hard to understand. So if there's ever anything I can do to make your lives or jobs easier, I definitely here's a resource for you all. But that's all I have. So if you have any questions, I'm happy to take them.
Did you have hard copies for everybody?
I checked with, and they are in the mail, but not here.
Oh, okay.
They will be here tomorrow, which is, you know, a bummer.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Dustin. Thank you.
Number 10, Consideration of Resolution Number 2-25, Resolution Accepting Bergen KDV's Financial Audit of the City of Cascade's 2024 Fiscal Year, which began July 1, 2023, and ended June 30, 2024. Is there any questions? If none, I need a motion.
I'll make a motion.
Motion by Delaney. Second by Gail. Roll call.
Oliphant.
Aye.
Weber.
Aye.
Hush.
Aye.
Gail.
Aye.
Delaney.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Number 11, CEDC to address city council on budget requested funds from fiscal year 24 and fiscal year 25 and discuss budget requests for fiscal year 26.
Hi, I'm Ken McDermott, president of the Cascade Economic Development Corporation, and here to request funding for fiscal year 2024, fiscal year 2025, and then budget requests for the upcoming fiscal year. And so in fiscal year 2024, we're, the CEDC was approved for $17,500, I believe, for our annual budget. We received $10,000 of those funds and were asked to come back to request the balance of those funds. And then for fiscal year 2025, we were approved for $20,000. And so we're asking for that funding. And then for the upcoming year, we're requesting $20,000 for the fiscal year 2026 budget. And so page 121 of your packet there, Deanna did a good job giving a summary of the relationship between CEDC and... So when CEDC gets a business lead, we vet that lead. And then assuming that it's a lead that we want to follow up on, in the past, we've gotten together with the city to see what kind of incentives may be available to the business coming in. And of course, all those incentives are subject to council approval. Typically, when we meet with the business, we have to sign a confidentiality statement at some point to get the details of what they're doing because there's other communities competing for the same businesses a lot of times. And so at one point, it was suggested that the city be brought in at the beginning of that process. And we had some concerns about doing that just because of the confidentiality, confidential nature of some of those discussions. And so we did don't want anything to be, have to go into public record while we're negotiating those things. And so the idea that the CEDC vets these leads that come in, number one, it saves the council time in having to consider leads that, for one reason or another, don't fit within what we would consider desirable businesses for the community. Or maybe they have a request for a labor force that our community just can't accommodate. And so we think we've done a pretty good job vetting those in the past and have brought those leads to the council at the appropriate time. And so we're just requesting to continue to operate in that fashion. We do work with ECIA and have had ECIA involved with us probably since about 2017. And so we contract with them to do things like taking care of, preparing our agendas for our meetings, writing grants, communicating with various other outside organizations if we need some research done, and those kinds of things. And so we think that they're an important partner, and we want to continue to have them involved with our organization going forward. And so that's just a little background on the CEDC. You can see there on pages 123 and 124 of your packet, we provided our current balance sheet and then kind of a proposed budget for the upcoming year. One of the things that is not in the budget, but that we've footnoted, is that in the industrial park, we have a limited number of lots at this point in time that are what you'd consider shovel-ready. And so we're looking at doing some excavation work at some point during the year to prepare more of those lots to be ready to build on so that when we do have a lead that comes in, we don't have to spend a bunch of time moving dirt and so forth. And so that will, would be, we've had some estimates from MSA done. And that, there'll be, depending on the size of the project, we're going to try to do some of that with the cash we have on hand. We've also used funding from other sources in the past, including ECIA and McCoqueta Valley REC to help with some of that kind of work. And so we would evaluate that project at the time that it came about. But, and so, as I said, pages 123, 124, and 125 kind of lay out the balance sheet and the budget and our 2024 year-end results. Page 126, then, is just a map of the industrial park that shows the property that we have available right now. And so along First Avenue, you can see we have 0.79 acres and 0.53 acre lots there. And then along Industrial Drive on the west side, there's a couple 2-acre lots. And then a larger parcel on the east side of Industrial Drive that's 38 acres. And on that parcel is what we're looking at, doing some excavation work and so forth in the coming year to make some more land available for development. Wanted to share with you a little bit of background as far as kind of the economic impact that CEDC has had on the city of Cascade over the years. And so on page 139 of your packet, and I apologize, that's hard to read, I know. But ultimately, you know, what I guess, what I wanted to say is that for, just as an example, in 2022, real estate taxes paid on land that was at one time owned by the Cascade Economic Development Corporation. That property had assessed value of $7.8 million and generated annual taxes of about $185,000. For 2023, the assessed value was $9.5 million, and taxes generated were about $230,000. And we're projecting 2024 taxes to be paid in September of '25 and March of '26. But the assessed values will be about $10.5 million with annual tax revenue of about $245,000. And, you know, that doesn't include the businesses like McAllister Electric, Midwest Metals, MAC Properties, which is the storage unit, and Cody Hansen's CLH Repair that add about another $45,000 in property taxes. So all those businesses are there because the city and the Economic Development Group worked in partnership to get that street put in that's there and got a RISE grant to do that project. So some pretty good development in the city as a result of the city and the Economic Development Group working together. To give you a little background on our relationship with ECIA, on page 138 of your packet, you can see that since 2017, ECIA has helped write grants for the city of Cascade. And we've been awarded about $1.4 million for various projects. Everything from, and things in the industrial park to housing needs assessments, to downtown building renovations with catalyst grants. And most recently, we were able to get a DRA grant, DRA grant, to do some work on starting a downtown master plan. And also had been able to get a couple of grants to allow us to put Wi-Fi in the city parks, the Legion, and the Spring to downtown Cascade. So those are just some of the things that ECI brings to the table in their partnership with us. And then the final page there, ECIA also did a 2024 analysis on the businesses in Cascade and showed the different... They made 20 total visits. So they go around to businesses in Cascade, asking various questions on how things are going with their business, what is going well, what needs improvement. And then they give us feedback so that we can bring that information back to the council. And so that's kind of just a summary of where we're at. And so I guess I would ask if anyone has any questions for Cascade Economic Development Corp. As a follow-up to that, any of that information.
On workforce availability, you would determine what people are available for a prospective...
For example, if we have a business that says... For example, if we have a business that says they need to hire twenty-five-hundred local people to fund their business, we would decide, we would probably say that we don't have that available workforce.
But I mean, they would, they would make that determination before they'd even consider Cascade, wouldn't they?
When they send out an RFP, they put their stations in there and so then we decide if it's worth responding to that RFP.
I think Economic Development does a pretty good job of weeding out prospects, whoever. I think probably and we had a couple of councilmen in my, or councilpeople and myself and Economic Development, when we met, I think the idea was in a generic level, when it gets to, you know, if you've focused in on a, on a company and whatever, in a generic way, just find out the city needs to be involved at some point, maybe a little bit earlier on, make sure that zoning is correct, you know, for that parcel that, I mean, we've had problems with some old county streets or roads and whatever in the past, placement of the buildings that may, you know, that may create a situation where it'll fall through if, you know, if the, either the zoning or the building can't be placed the way they want because of easements or whatever so I think that's probably as important as anything that, you know, in a generic level, we didn't, personally, I don't think, you know, we need to know who the company is, I don't think that's a good idea because of the very competitive nature of whatever but and as I said, Economic Development has always done a good job of knowing that it's a company that employs ten people and, you know, knows the background or whatever the situation is but I, and we had discussed that last summer, I guess, in the group and I think that's probably the thing that'll keep us, you know, in a little better position.
Yeah, and I, I agree with what you're saying, Bill, because we did have a couple situations that we were able to work through but there were some easement issues or maybe even a, an old street that we weren't aware of at the time that had we talked about it a little earlier, maybe we could have made things happen a little more quickly or just made the process go a little smoother so, yeah, I don't think we have an issue with that at all. We know we need to work with you and you need to work with us and we need to be partners on, on these kind of deals so.
Would, would it be better to have the city involved at an earlier point because of the incentive package because that's what anchors the majority of people locating any place anymore?
Yeah, when we get to the point where, and it would be early on, I'll be honest with you because before most of, if, if a business is looking at communities and vetting communities, they're going to want to know what incentives are out there.
That's the biggest thing now.
Being offered to them so, yeah, you, you know, once we get to that point where, where they're interested in coming here and we're interested in having them come here, that's when we would get with the city and probably not the entire council but at least the city administrator and, you know, have her do the background work and then look at what incentives we would have available and then, you know, come to the city to talk about those. But I guess the main, I, I mean, I have no problem, or we have no problem giving the city an annual update or, you know, more frequently if there's more activity going on, we do have representatives from the council come to our meetings and, you know, we try to be transparent with what we have going on. But I just kind of wanted to give you that little summary tonight and the, the main purpose of the request is just to request the funding that had been approved in the prior two fiscal years and to ask for your consideration for the upcoming year's budget in the amount of twenty thousand dollars, which is consistent with what we've had for the last number of years so.
So I never heard back from when we had that meeting going through there and one of the things that we had discussed in that was this process of vetting, when businesses come to you and you have that process that was supposed to come back to us was that then you would lay out a process of how it works in your company so you get this lead, whether it be a large lead or a small lead, that then it filters through your corporation that you guys weed these out, whether you say it's a twenty-five-hundred-dollar employee or whatnot, that how does that work? Does, does this lead come in and Ken gets it and Ken says, oh, that's not going to work and then we get a rejection, does it filter through your, you know, how, what is this? That was one of the things we talked back about.
Yep.
Is having this laid-out process.
Yep, so we, when, when we've had leads come in since that meeting, what we do, if it's a lead that comes from ECIA or Iowa Development Group Development, there's a general background on the type of business, the number of employees that they need, some of the attributes that they're looking for in the site that they want to locate on and so what we've done is we've emailed that information out to our group and then either had a, talked about it at a meeting of the C E D C members or had a response by email to decide if that was a lead that we wanted to pursue.
Okay, and then we were, we had discussed also that like especially, especially a local one, obviously, city would come in later as you guys kind of, what you were discussing here, going through, but since the city would be putting forth the funding and that you guys are using that funding with the ECIA to buy that lead thing from the state, that when it was from the state, that it would be a different direction.
I'm sorry.
Be involved sooner. Cause you guys get, you guys pay for the membership for, off the top of my head, I can't remember the name of the, from the state where you get leads that come straight from the state.
Prosperity Eastern Iowa.
Yes, that at that level, coming from the state and since the city is helping fund and pay for that, that we would be involved in that from the get-go.
So, yeah, if you want.
You know, you're right, it is a little bit different, Brad Ludwig, Vice President of Economic Development, it is a little bit different when we come from the state, we have to, I mean, we need to put our best foot forward when we get a Prosperity Eastern Iowa so that's when we want to have an incentive package readily available for them and then some of the requests in the past, when I, no longer president, but when I was president, if there was a local request, I would ask them, you know, where do you want to go with this, do you want confidential and in certain cases specifically asked that the city of Cascade not be involved at this stage, so it's kind of, you know, it's, there's not one process that fits everything, but I think there's a time when the city needs to be involved in with those larger leads, yeah, right, right away, we need to, and it would be nice to get a format in place where, say, if some business has fifty jobs, what do we, you know, in pretty generic format, but if you have fifty jobs, can we have some type of a TIF agreement available with the exclusion of subject to city council approval? And that's what we used to do if, you know, when we get those leads, I would contact Deanna and say, here's what we have, do you think there's any more, you know, this guy has fifty jobs, it looks like it's going to be a good, good business and we would talk to Deanna, the mayor, and we would try to figure out if we wanted to be more aggressive in some of those situations, it's just some of the local ones have been challenging lately because of confidentiality.
And I, I get the local, when we were discussing that meeting, the local thing was the thing that there would be a, probably a later point where the city would come in in most cases, but the main thing was is that those, sorry.
Ken kind of talked, that way, the way you talked about emailing going to all the members, that's, that's the lead we're involved for our statements.
Okay. But and I'm saying that for the, for the city on those, the state leads, not the local guy, but the state leads coming, cause they're coming in pretty well open and looking for this thing and for us, especially if they're a bigger, a bigger area or a bigger company or something of that nature.
Right.
We got water usage, we got electrical usage, we got a lot of things on the city end and I think since we're helping pay for that, I think we should be able to be involved in that part.
Yeah, and I don't disagree with that, Mike, because just for the reasons you stated, if, you know, if there's utility use, water use, those kinds of things and, yeah, we, we don't have a problem with that. Again, those leads a lot of times are confidential, but that doesn't mean we can't work with the city on looking at the, as, kind of as Bill referred to, the generic needs of the, of the company.
Right, right.
Just to interject a comment here, a lot of times in the past, if you've gotten a lead, you know, and if you know that they need this much water capacity or they're going to have sewer waste or whatever, you've reached out to the utilities and the city and said, this is what the, I have no idea who the company is, but you've said, is this something the city can, you know, accommodate and then we do check to see if it is something because if I say no right away, then they know, okay, we can't do it, you know.
Then we don't waste.
So they're, they do, when, they do reach out soon in the process, just not divulge everything, you know.
Yeah, I'm just saying on the state level though, it's pretty wide open.
Yes, yeah.
You know what I mean, going through, um, the other question, I was thinking about when you were talking about the threshold for the amount of, you know, how many people they, they would want to employ, like say, two-hundred-and-fifty or so. I'd like to have discussions on what that threshold is and, and the general census of this, in this area where we go, everybody that commutes is usually fifteen, twenty, thirty minutes, thirty minutes in a car is pretty much what everybody does, I mean, there's probably everybody in this town, family have, go back and forth, fire, at work, family, diarrhea, it doesn't matter, so I'd like us to think in processes when we're looking at those companies, that, you know, we can't just look at the population of Cascade.
Yeah, and I probably didn't describe that correctly, I mean, we don't rule anyone out just because they're looking at two-hundred jobs or something like that, we did have a couple RFPs recently where they were requiring twenty-five-hundred, they were going to be twenty-five-hundred to three-thousand jobs that, so that wasn't the only reason we took them off the table, but.
We're looking at a burger tax because on an, on an economic side of it, for, for us as a city, when you bring in a company that say is going to bring in three-fifty, four hundred jobs, let's just say in Cascade, then we have people from other towns that commute.
Sure.
And then they come here, they, they use our gas stations, they use our diners, they use our stuff and they work here and then possibly maybe even a movie I raise families here, so I mean, I just want to make sure we're not, we're not only going to take, you know, fifty, fifty-job companies or, you know what I mean, that we're, we're taking that into evaluation that, I mean, everybody's within a fifteen, twenty-minute drive from us, you know, that they could easily commute or come here.
Labor study the state provides us, so when we do respond to our, we have to include all of that labor force in it and we do have, you know, the proximity of, of average person will drive this many miles to work, we also have to keep in mind our local employers because we don't want to upset them either, they're taking all their people.
Yeah, I get that.
There's got to be kind of a happy medium and we usually use that workforce data to provide that because we have to show the company like, hey, we're saying this, we also have to back it up, so, yeah.
Okay, great.
Any other questions? I appreciate your time and consideration, thank you.
Thank you. Number twelve, Greater Dubuque update to the city council?
Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
High enough for six-foot-three people here. My name is Jason White, I work for the Greater Dubuque Development Corporation and the organization just celebrated its fortieth anniversary and I have not been with the organization for forty years and I'm also not forty, I'm actually older than forty, so I'm kind of intended as that and, but as an organization, we're involved in a number of different things. One is our business retention expansion contact program, which will see summary there for Cascade that we shared with Cascade Economic Development Corporation a couple of months ago, wanted to share it with the city as well, but wanted to wait, following transition in administrators for everyone to have a chance to view it together. And then we're also involved with business recruitment, so the, the last conversation is definitely something that's very pertinent to our world and then also workforce solutions. So we have a menu of workforce services related to access to Dubuquejobs.com, we've also bought the domain for other communities as well for like access cascadejobs.com so we have a few investors here namely Fidelity Bank, Cascade Manufacturing, Weber Metals, Acwen Little Angels, which we'll talk about here in a second, also career events, job and career events, we do a lot with the colleges in our backyard here, we have a program called Talent Dubuque where we engage interns of employers in our region and get them together for social opportunities and engagement throughout the region, whether it's Dubuque Fighting Saints game, whether it's summer at the River Museum, et cetera. And then we have some strategic initiatives too, like childcare, housing, renewable energy and a few other things too, so actually the former director of the Iowa Department of Economic Development back in the day, Dave Lyons, he was actually economic development director during the Branston administration, a little bit during the Villasack administration, he works with us in kind of a consultant capacity on some of those things. As it pertains to childcare, that's an area we've been very involved with trying to create not only more slots, but also on the workforce development side of things, as it pertains to Acwen Little Angels, as I mentioned, they were supported by our Dubuque Childcare Solutions Fund in two thousand twenty-four, the Childcare Solutions Fund is a public-private partnership to help support licensed childcare centers in Dubuque County, the fund is supported by Dubuque Initiatives, Greater Dubuque Development, the State of Iowa and area employers, it provides reimbursement for activities that child, that licensed childcare centers in Dubuque County do to grow the number of children and families they serve. And then a little bit more on that, the Childcare Solutions Fund granted Acwen twenty-two-thousand seven-hundred-sixty-four dollars and twenty cents to assist the childcare center with recruitment, retention and professional development of their employees and part of this was a thousand-dollar sign-on grant to four different new employees at Acwen, helping them to increase the number of children that they serve and a new round is now available in two thousand twenty-five and we will be inviting childcare centers to apply again and that will be for recruitment of new employees, so really looking at that and trying to, to make that a higher priority, especially as Dubuque County communities are generally growing and so we're in a good part of the state for that and I'll talk a little bit about that in a second too. One thing I wanted to draw your attention to was this sheet here, so something we did a couple, about eighteen months ago, was initiated last year, most of the work went into it, so our board said, okay, how do we keep young people in our community, how do we keep young people in Dubuque County, kind of to protect that brain drain, so to speak, from, from leaving Dubuque County and so we did a survey which called the Next Gen Survey, we allowed anybody to fill out the survey, but basically it was about what people's preferences are in choosing a community in which to live and so this here is a small portion of sample of, a larger sample of that survey, forty-one people from Cascade and Bernard that completed the survey and or a handful of. the survey, and or a handful of people are students at Cascade High School, I know, completed the survey. So kind of gives you a flavor here, um, when it says individuals the age of eighteen to forty. So how you read this chart is the purple bluish, uh, bar there tells you, uh, the importance as a factor for that individual completing the survey, um, how important it is to them in a future community. The green is how much they believe it is truly is present currently in, in the community in which they live. So you see here, great schools and education. Uh, they believed that that was the highest priority, you know, for them in choosing their community, great schools and education. And the green what is how they believe on a scale of one to seven, uh, it, it's ranked, it's, it's, it's valued by the community. So in this case, great schools and education, the individual values it more than they believe its value is, uh, in the community. Um, and then you can see affordable homeownership ranked second, or almost tied really to great schools and education. Uh, low crime rates, access to quality healthcare, that one jumped off the page candidly, because throughout the survey, young people strongly believed access to quality healthcare, uh, was important to them in a future community. And then, um, access to affordable childcare, see previous conversation, and then variety of restaurants. So I'll kind of stop there. But then in the bottom, you see what they value the least, but we have the most of casinos. So casinos, uh, country club memberships, uh, minor and major league sports teams, and professional organizations, just to name a few there. So I'll kind of let you look at that, uh, on your own time, but just wanted to draw your attention to that. And then the other thing I wanted to draw your attention to was of the info actions that we performed. These were thirteen of the largest employers in Cascade from July first, twenty twenty-three, and June thirtieth, twenty twenty-four, representing more than seven hundred fifty employees in the community. To give you a sense of that, there's roughly fourteen hundred individuals within a five mile radius of Cascade that make up working age population, daytime population. So, you know, it's not exact, but obviously that's fifty percent of that, if it came out to that way in the math. But you can see here, just from a community perception standpoint, um, you know, looking, going left to right, and these are all summarized in the narrative in the last sheet, but, uh, area businesses ranked, um, the following as the top priorities for the community going forward. First was amount and affordability of housing, uh, talent attraction initiatives, recreational opportunities, downtown revitalization and childcare. A large percentage of, uh, employers, uh, reported increasing sales and, and also expanding and adding market share. Top community strengths were quality of life amenities, market share, location, customer loyalty, community leadership and partnerships. Uh, top barriers were workforce, labor pool, housing and childcare. And, um, let's kind of flip the page here, but something that's a little bit interesting on here is, uh, when it comes to ease of doing business with government, uh, scale of one to seven. Uh, this tends to get some attention by, uh, cities that we speak to and work with. And a scale of one to seven, um, from July twenty twenty-three through June twenty twenty-four, uh, city government got a five point one six out of seven of the employers we spoke to, which is a pretty, pretty healthy score. So generally speaking, these thirteen employers thought the city government was functioning pretty well. Uh, county government also, five point two two. State government, uh, just to take behind, five point one, and federal government far behind, three point six. Uh, you can see also some other indexes here, such as, uh, workforce index in terms of how employers ranked productivity, uh, stability, quality and availability, how they rated community services. Uh, generally speaking, very happy with your fire departments, uh, schools, police, uh, and obviously lowest, I always say whatever, what's lower than property taxes? That's what I usually look at in terms of low ranked services. And in this case, it's housing, uh, air cargo, air passenger service, and public transportation. So, um, so yeah, I'll just kind of leave it at that. Um, and then the last thing, this was kind of a last minute thing, but, uh, Nick, we have two, two workforce, uh, professionals in our team. Uh, Nick Hockenberry, who generally works with nonprofit, education and government. I asked him to run a report in terms of population growth over the last number of years, based on the American Community Survey. And if you look at Cascade compared to Dubuque, Dyersville, Eppor, Farley, Piasta, Dubuque County and Iowa as a whole, uh, Cascade leads the county with respect to population growth by far, as a percentage has changed since twenty twenty and also twenty eighteen. So I think a lot of people maybe wouldn't realize that or know that, uh, but I think it's important to, to point that out, that a lot of the things you're doing here, we talked about the Next Gen Survey, you know, the things that people value in a community. Uh, it's definitely been noticed that the city has invested in, uh, community amenities, things for people, library, pickleball courts, downtown, things of that nature. And I think all of that really plays into that, in addition to additional housing, which every community is really working on right now. So, so I'll just kind of leave it at that. If you have any questions, happy to help. And, uh, if you have any questions later, feel free to reach out to. So.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Number thirteen, Consideration of Resolution Three dash twenty-five, resolution of the City of, City Council of the City of Cascade, Iowa, designating the Cascade Pioneers the city's official newspaper with the Telegraph Herald as the official alternate newspaper for the term January one, twenty twenty-five to December thirty-first, twenty twenty-five, for publication as required by law of ordinances and official notices. Need a motion?
I'll make a motion that we use those.
Motion by Webber.
I'll second it.
Second by Alifant, roll call.
Weber.
Hi.
Hush.
Hi.
Gail.
Hi.
Delaney.
Hi.
Alifant.
Aye.
Number fourteen, Consideration of Resolution Number Four dash twenty-five, resolution approving a reappointment of a planning and zoning commission member to fill another term through September thirtieth, twenty twenty-seven.
Make a motion.
Motion by Delaney.
Who's the, who's the replacement?
There's no replacement, these are reappointments.
Reappointments.
These are, yeah, both of these are people that have been on and their term is up and they want to take another term.
They'll go back. Yep. Motion by Delaney, second.
I'll second.
Second by Gail, roll call.
Uh, before you say that, I'll just, can we just state their names? It's Rick Knapper and Rick Kerper.
Kerper.
Rick Kerper, sorry, Rick Kerper and Steve Moore.
Moran.
Yeah, Moran.
I just want to make a statement. I actually relate to both of them, they're first cousins. Um, and I know in the past, there's been the case of, of, um, um, because they're getting, um, monies from the city and whoever, it's actually, could potentially be a conflict of interest or a nepotism type thing. Um, I want to kind of make a statement as well. Uh, we had something similar a year or so ago, that was even a closer relationship of people. Um, and I know, as a first cousin level, and previously I was appointed as, um, to, to, uh, a term on the council, and I had a first cousin that was told by city attorney to not, to not, to abstain.
Abstain.
Um, I think as a council, about a year or so ago, there's a case where we were told that, uh, it was only a deal if the family members lived under the same roof, which I totally disagree with. That's, uh, you could be a family member, a father, a son, sister, et cetera, as long as you weren't under the same roof. I think as a council, we should at least have a, have our own rules. I think, uh, I'm fine with the first cousin type thing. I mean, usually you're fairly close and perhaps, you know, to a first cousin and whoever. So I'd almost like to see in the future that we at least rewrite our rules.
You're thinking more than like abstaining from your vote, or?
To expand the relationship?
No, to, to, that the person who, who has a relative at the first cousin level would, would abstain. And I will.
Right, that's what I'm saying. You, but you're, you're not saying beyond the, uh, abstain.
Yeah, but a year or so ago, we had a case where it was actually a much closer relationship and whatever, and we were told at that point that it was, people had to be under the same roof as a family member. And I think it's important that we.
To go farther?
Yeah. And I think as a council, we should, um, perhaps at the first, first cousin level. I, I disagreed with the, you had to be under the same roof.
Okay, I see what you're saying. You, you want, you want to frame this a little more.
Rule for the council that you abstain.
Yeah, I think we should have a discussion on it. I don't think that's such a.
That's fine. Something to look forward in the future, so.
So you're saying that?
I mean, I, I disagree with the first cousin level. I can understand father, son-in-law kind of situation, but I disagree with first cousin. I think that that takes it too far out, especially in this community as small as Cascade. So many of us are related.
It's up to the council. I mean, I, I would.
I think, I think it's worth having a, a.
Consideration of it.
I think it's worth having a discussion over, you know, that we should have maybe.
So your first cousins, who?
Both.
So they're, they're both first cousins?
My first cousins.
What you're saying, they're both first cousins on that board? That's what you're?
I'm just saying, I would, in essence, be affirming them getting a paid position in the City of Cascade as a first cousin. And I think, and in the past, I've been told, or, um, I had my, actually, Bob Marrow is my first cousin back dozen years ago.
Yep.
Was told by the, by the city attorney that that was too close a relationship. I think as a, as a council, we have the ability to create our own rule. And I would go along with that personally. So, the council.
So they, on that board, they don't seek other people to take their positions? They just roll them over?
No, what I think we're getting at is Bill.
No, I know that, but I'm just, I'm asking a different question.
Okay.
So there's nobody else that wants on that board besides those two?
They, they, it's their term, it's their, um, their term is up, therefore they are asked first, do you want to take another term?
Okay.
If they say no, then we open it up to.
And you solicit for new people.
Yeah.
Okay.
Shouldn't always be advertised, I think is what.
Well, yeah, I'm, I'm just like, I'm, I'm this, when our term's up, we gotta go for election, don't you?
Yep.
You do.
I do.
Yeah, but the boards aren't like that. And normally.
Well, that's what, that's what I'm asking.
Then normally, we, we, it's not like we have people knocking on our door to say, I want on that planning and zoning board when there's an opening, or I want on the Board of Adjustment when there's an opening. So, believe me, when somebody is willing to take another term, we appreciate that. Because it brings knowledge, it brings expertise.
Well, once, but once again, according to Mark's, um, line of reasoning, and again, it's a role we can determine as a city council at every position, whether it's a library board, or, or any, any committee would be advertised.
Well, that and, and I, yeah, I, I think advertising i- is a fair thing, because, and back to what Bill was saying about the first cousin thing. So now we're in a situation where we have two board members, and they may have done a fantastic job.
Yep.
But let's just say now we have someone new from the community who steps up and says, I, I think I could do something here, and I'd like to serve my community in there and have a chance at it, or whatever. So now we're sitting in front of this board, who then has to decide, are we going to roll over the people who've been in there, or are we going to appoint somebody new? And where if two of those people on that board, let's say for Bill, are a family, and he goes, I'm gonna stick with family, you know what I mean? So, I mean, there's something, there, there is something to be said about a discussion over, I know that gets complicated, and I know you're looking at me like, yeah, that's probably not going to happen, but, you know, but in the scenario, playing out devil's advocate here, you know?
Yeah.
Hypothetically, in, in that scenario that it were to occur or happen, um, having guidelines in place to make sure that, you know, we have some way of sorting that out that's fairly, and it doesn't look, you know, like you're being, these are my cousins.
Yeah.
You know, or whatever, you know what I'm saying?
Hmm.
So I, I, I get what Bill's saying there. It, I mean, it's valid. I think it's a discussion we should have.
And we can proceed to the vote right now. We have a motion and a second.
Have a motion and a second. Roll call.
Okay, roll call would be Hush.
Abstain.
Gail.
Hi.
Delaney.
Hi.
Alifant.
Aye.
Weber.
Hi.
Number fifteen, Consideration of Resolution Number Zero Five dash twenty-five, resolution approving a reappointment of a planning and zoning commission member to fill another term through September thirtieth, twenty twenty-seven. Need a motion?
I don't do that.
This is another one. Is this redundant?
It's for each, it's for each one.
It's for each one.
I'll make the motion again.
Motion by Delaney.
Second.
Second by Gail, roll call.
Gail.
Hi.
Delaney.
Hi.
Alifant.
Aye.
Weber.
Hi.
Hush.
Abstain.
Number sixteen, Consideration of Resolution Number Zero One dash twenty-five, resolution approving annual appointments for the City of Cascade, Iowa for the calendar year of twenty twenty-five. Any questions? I need a motion.
I need a motion.
Motion by Gail.
Second.
Second by Hush. Roll call.
Delaney.
Hi.
Alifant.
Aye.
Weber.
Hi.
Hush.
Hi.
Gail.
Hi.
Number seventeen, Consideration of Resolution Number Zero Seven dash twenty-five, resolution setting date for public hearing on urban renewal plan amendment for the Cascade urban renewal area. Need a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Motion by Weber.
I'll second.
Second by Alifant, roll call.
Alifant.
Aye.
Weber.
Hi.
Hush.
Hi.
Gail.
Hi.
Delaney.
Hi.
Number eighteen, Consideration of Resolution Number Zero Six dash twenty-five, resolution approving pay application number eleven for the Cascade Public Library Project in the City of Cascade, Iowa. Any questions on this? If none, I need a motion.
I'll make a motion.
Motion by Alifant. Second by Weber, roll call.
Weber.
Hi.
Hush.
Hi.
Gail.
Hi.
Delaney.
Hi.
Alifant.
Aye.
Number nineteen, do we need to vote on suspending the, um, three meeting rule on this first?
It's up to whatever the council decides, if they want to waive the second reading, I mean, approve the second reading, waive the third reading, or if we just want to approve the second reading and do the next reading at the next meeting.
What would everybody like here?
In my opinion, um, it's rather large. Um, typically when we waive the third reading, it's usually for something that's either got caught too late, something that had to be done.
In a timely fashion.
In a very timely fashion. And we're looking at a two week difference, as far as this here is concerned. Uh, the first reading was between, thanks, you know, it was caught between Thanksgiving and, and the Christmas holidays. Um, now I don't really, I'm not sure, other than a certain amount of revenue, um, that we really need to, um, be in such a hurry for a certain particular item. The other, um, I'll leave it at that. I would, I would, uh.
Do the third reading.
I would, or I would, uh, suggest that we go ahead and, and maintain the, the timing for the third meeting.
I agree with Bill on this one.
So I need a motion on ordinance number twenty-five, twenty-four, on the second reading only?
I do have a quick question on that. Since we'll be most likely, uh, first round of adjusted, uh, whatever will probably possibly be in the April, um, bills, do we want to turn around then on July first and have the?
It'd be the March bills.
March or April, whatever.
Yeah, it'll be the March bills.
You turn around and have another increase the first, July first of twenty twenty-five, or I would propose that we wait approximately one year, July first of twenty twenty-six. Rather than back to back, within three months, have two, um, you know, increases. rather than back-to-back, within three months have two, you know, increases.
Where are we getting that from?
Where are you getting?
Or instead of doing it July 1st of 2026, maybe look at January of 2026? I mean, we can, I think that's something that we need to look at once we get a few bills and see the extra revenue coming in, and then see where we're at with the budget.
Yeah, it's basically stated at the beginning of next fiscal year, your next fiscal year in July 1st, 2025. So I mean, people would be seeing a one increase in another month or so, and another one two or three months later in their bills. So that's, that's where it comes from.
Okay, it does say that, but it also says that it's up to the city council. So I mean, we can wait six months, you know, we don't have to do it July 1st. But like started in October of this year to be effective with the bills that go out in January. But again, we can look at the revenue over the next few months and, you know, three, four, or five months and see where we're at too.
So I need a motion on the second reading of ordinance number twenty-five dash twenty-four then?
I'll make a motion.
Motion by Weber.
Second.
Second by Hush, roll call.
Hush.
Aye.
Gail.
Aye.
Delaney.
Aye.
Alafon.
Aye.
Weber.
Aye.
Number twenty, consideration of resolution number zero eight dash twenty-five, resolution approving change orders from Garland Construction Incorporated construction contract for the new Cascade Public Library. Any questions?
This is just something that was left out at the beginning?
Right, so the data ports and that cost was not included in the original contract because they, it was unknown exactly what we would need. So that's why it's coming out at the, pretty much the end of the project.
Is that something that they should have foreseen?
No, I don't think so. It was, it was just unknown at the time that the bidding was happening, like what would we actually need?
Okay. I need a motion.
I'll make a motion.
Motion by Alafon. Second.
Second.
Second by Delaney, roll call.
Gail.
Aye.
Delaney.
Aye.
Alafon.
Aye.
Weber.
Aye.
Hush.
Aye.
Reports, Brad? Everything okay?
Yeah, it's been good. It's a new year.
Deanna?
The only one thing that I would like to make a comment about, at the next council meeting, we will have budget, start of budget discussions after the regular meeting, and we'll start having department heads present to the city council. And then I would like to have a special budget meeting on February 3rd, where like the outside entities will come talk. If there's any department heads that we didn't get to, they will also present. And then the next budget discussions will be held at the, after the regular meeting at the first meeting in February.
I am out of the state on February 3rd, just FYI on vacation.
Is that okay with everybody else?
Just for, just for, for telling the truth, I will be gone at the next meeting as well, so. I'm capable of doing that, Mark.
Did you have trouble with the truth? Okay, that was good. Do I readjust that, or is that agreeable?
I think, I mean, that's fine, don't you? Because if there's any questions from anything that comes out of either one of those two meetings, you know, I'm, I'm happy to sit down with, you know, with any of you, or, or we can kind of like have a brief overview at the next meeting to kind of, so that everybody's on the same page.
Can you, could you send those out and invites on the calendar?
I can, yeah, absolutely.
So they come in, so, because I check back from that if I can make sure I'm not missing something.
So if there's nothing else for the bedroom of the community, I need a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion.
Motion by Hush. Second by Weber, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Thanks, everybody.